To establish your form, please.
Mr. Kellie.
Here.
Mr. Coe.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Here.
Mr. Kalasini.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
All right, you can please try and sub your able to put them in.
Pledge of allegiance, we are the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Aggers and Ms. Lyons, can we have anyone sign up to speak tonight?
Yes, sir.
We have Barbara Jarman. Oh, Jarman, Jarman, yep, you may speak.
You're welcome to stand at the podium here.
Okay.
Thanks for coming today.
I hope you're not too. Okay, the reason I am here is I live in a duplex. And my neighbor has given me many problems. Okay, that there was a downspout on his house. And the original owners extended that so it could go into my yard. And I was okay with that because I have a two-story and they had a ranch. So the downspout, if they did not put any attachment, the water would be going too close to my house. And part of my two-story is on their property. That's the way they, that's okay, yeah. The problem is that the village gave the builder the authority to put that small downspout on the roof. And it was going into the owner's gutter. And that's why he made the attachment. And it was in my yard, and I'm making sense of ours.
So you share, you share a roofline kind of thing?
Pardon me?
You share a roofline? Is that why, so that your neighbors taking on your water?
Uh, no, actually, there, you could see the separation where my roof ends and his, and his house starts as far as the roof goes. Okay, so what happened? The downspout was in the yard. And then when they sold the house, and now the new owner, who's giving me a lot of problems, he decided to remove that miniature downspout. I call it miniature, but it's a small one. And the village gave the builders the authority to build it that way. So now this new owner removed the original downspout from his house, put it on my siding, and then he also added another downspout and put that in my yard, too. So now I have two downspouts in my yard. And he covered everything up. So that I can't even see what's going on there. So if one of the downspouts got disconnected, all of that water could be going into my basement. That is my problem. Now, I called the village. Josh Ray was out there a couple of times. And he said there wasn't much that can be done. I called State Building. I never heard from them. So that is my problem. The reason I'm here is I need some help because I don't want two downspouts in my yard collecting all that water. And I'm sorry, I'm shaking, my voice is trembling because of my medication I'm taking. Other than that, I'm dying. So this is what's going on here. I mean, the village made a mistake. And I'm the one, and this is what Josh told me, well, it's up to me to solve the problem. I can't afford to get a lawyer. I mean, I am 87 years old, and this is going to be my responsibility when the village made a mistake. So I need help.
I am familiar with this, Mr. Mayor. I think it'd be a good idea to have Mr. Con, let's get this, make a second look and another opinion, and make sure the sample gets out there.
I'm sorry?
I said, Mr. Con has taken Josh Ray's position. Josh is no longer in the village, so Mr. Con is his replacement, and he knows our codes very well. Sorry, he stepped away. I will have, there you go, we should get his business done.
Thank you.
So we have your phone number and everything here.
Yes, I have my number there.
Yeah, we'll give you a call.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, my son puts, I don't know what you call it, the extender so the water goes further into my yard. So it's away from my building. But I'm afraid of if that downspout gets disconnected, that's underneath all the boards, which he put on just recently so nobody could see what's going on, then that's all going to go into my basement. And another important point, there are two other duplexes, 220 and 218, 244 and 242, that have the same configuration. They have absolutely no problem. It's just that my neighbor is very strong. Uh, yeah, so this, this is what the situation is. So I have your card. Mo Con?
Yeah.
Okay, I will keep your card.
Ma'am, can I ask, is it, is it new construction? I mean, how old is the?
No, I've been there for 20 years. It will be 20 years in 2024.
Okay, and which street are you on?
Red Hawk.
Red Hawk, right, right.
But the, you know, and what, what is so problematic is, as I've mentioned, there's two other duplexes with the same configuration. And that I went over to one of the gentlemen that is the owner of one of the duplexes, and he said he has no problem with his neighbor. He has the ranch, his neighbor has the two-story, and there's absolutely no problem. The neighbor is not giving me any problems. So that's why I'm a little skeptical about what's going on here. Okay?
Let's give Jay and Mo a chance to get their eyes on this and work with it. And of course, if it doesn't get resolved in the fashion that you're comfortable with, come back and see us.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so next, is that it?
That is, until this evening, yes.
Okay, so next, you have the, you have the meeting minutes from December 7th, 2023 in front of you, please review them at this time. There any changes to the minutes? I'll change the changes at this time. I'll entertain to approve the minutes as presented. First, second, and second question, comments?
Just hold one second, I was just concerned that all the votes for Aaron were correct. Trustee Kelly. Okay, because we approved one to pull it out and then voted.
This, this is, this vote was for approving that this would be consent agenda?
And then the second vote was to remove the two. Because we pulled two off that agenda.
They're on page eight.
So that was a motion to remove, that, I'm just confused.
No, the two that we pulled off are on page eight. 10 and 12.
But if we, if we did the motion to remove them and voted for them, and then we did the motion to approve the consent agenda that included the two that we had, that we removed?
No, so we, oh, I see what you're saying. So the consent agenda is showing in the agenda the two that were removed, so, so can the minutes be? On page seven.
Page seven.
On page seven. Yeah, we'll strike the 10 and 12. So 10 and 12 should not be in that list. They should be in the consent agenda because we removed them. And voted on them separately.
So that was no longer part of the consent agenda? Yeah.
It says removed by motion.
It does say removed by motion.
Can I explain why it's set up that way? Yeah, great, so the older portions of what was published on the agenda, so that's how everything is listed. So the original consent agenda had items number, SSAA number 10 and SSAA number 12. So in order for the minutes to kind of follow, so if somebody looks at the agenda and they looked at the minutes, you understand that those two were removed by motion, that's why there's that in the, in processes, it says removed by motion. So if somebody ever has a question, why was this on the agenda like this and not in the minutes, it's easy, it's easy to follow that. But you're correct, that number 12, no, number 10, number 12 were removed, but the agenda listed them at, under the consent agenda.
Okay, then maybe, I need to verify because I don't believe I voted yes on any SSAA. And it shows that I made the motion for the consent agenda.
Well, by having it removed by motion, then those two items were not on the agenda to be voted for.
No, I wouldn't have voted yes for any of the SSAs. I asked for one of them to be removed because I was planning to abstain from it. Other trustees asked for the other one to be removed.
Correct.
And I didn't vote yes for any SSA.
Right, that's why it says nay, so it was on top of page eight.
It says a motion to approve the consent agenda. Trustee Kelly moved to approve the consent agenda. Right, but then look in the votes, you're in nay. You just made the motion. Okay. So when you make a motion, you don't have to, you can vote. Okay, I just don't remember. Oh, maybe I did because I said we were removing those two. So then we approved the agenda and we voted on the consent, okay. Yeah, so on the next page, you're in nay. No, I abstained. Abstained.
Are we comfortable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a first and a second. We're all here, I can do it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose. Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mr. Aggers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we would ask your consideration of a motion to authorize staff to buy coverage for workers' compensation and business package insurances. Your agenda supplement includes lines in your packet, and she will review them briefly with you right now from her phone because she's having computer problems.
So just briefly, we were expecting approximately a 10 to 15% increase overall in our insurance premiums, the package premiums and workers' compensation for this year. And the premiums came in very favorable, actually, with an approximately 6% increase. We went through the coverages and everything stayed the same except for two things, which I explained in the agenda supplement. The first was an increase in the deductible for the buildings from $2,500 to $5,000. And then in the area of cyber liability, they, the extortion portion of the policy, they requested a change from $1 million in extortion coverage to $50,000. I found the $5,000, yeah, I had the same, I had the same on my face. So I, I really had no problem with the $2,500 to $5,000 deductible change. I don't think we would probably file an insurance claim for less than $5,000 anyway because we don't need that, you know, Nick, on our, on our record. However, I told them that I found the change in the endorsement coverage, or that sub-coverage, I guess you call it, unacceptable. And so we pulled that from the approval this evening. We have a 30-day extension on that particular policy, which will cost us approximately $400. And we, I will come back to you on the 18th of January with a, is it the 18th? Yes, 18th, today's 24th. 18th of January with a new, new cyber coverage or carrier at a slightly lower cost with the $1 million.
Seems interesting that they want to lower it considering the last few years they've been upping it.
The, the.
I know our policy has gone up in cyber insurance dramatically.
I think, so they clearly, I mean, it's rampant, right? All the ransomware and everything else, it's horrible.
Right.
So I don't, you know, we haven't had any claims, not gotten the tablecloth here, but yeah, I think this was a way to maybe reduce the number of people that they were covering, so.
Yeah, I know.
So it's been pulled, but you can see the, the premiums that I laid out. And I'm, I'm very pleased with the other portions of the, of the renewal package. And like I said, I think it will, it'll work out just fine, it's going to be just fine waiting on the cyber piece. So we're looking for a motion to allow staff to, to buy those coverages.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Lyons?
So, so cyber went up $1.
Yep.
In the coverage, $1. But the coverage went from 5, from a million to 50,000.
From that, on that extortion piece, yes. Yep, and I think.
Dollar increase.
It's, it was a way maybe to save the premium. I mean, if they had continued the $1 million, maybe it would have been a, you know, 5,000% increase or something. I don't really know.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Lyons, can you explain to me the difference between current year change and previous year change? And where you're pulling previous year, the last two columns of the table where it's, like for the package and umbrella, goes from 109, 103 to 125, 44, 440, sorry. So current year change is about 14.97 or 15%. And then there's a previous year change of 8.6%.
Yes.
Where's that pulling from?
That was from our report last year. So that, that took the last year's premium amount and the prior, prior years.
It would have been the 109 compared to the prior year that's not on the chart.
Yeah.
Ah.
Yeah, so it was just to kind of compare percentages.
So this is showing last year it went up 8%, this year it's going up 14 or almost 15%.
The one piece.
Right, that's what you just throw each line at.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to authorize staff to buy coverage for workers' compensation and business package insurances. So.
Second.
All in favor? Propose. All right, thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. We have the next four items related to special service areas, a resolution approving the 2023 administrative report for SSAA number 15, including amended special tax rule for calendar year 2023. Ms. Lyons?
So annually, we, you are asked to approve these administrative reports. This is a requirement of the bonds that are in place for the infrastructure, both in the Tuscany Woods and the Lakewood subdivisions. These are infrastructure SSAs, so they put in the roads, the water and sewer lines, the storm sewers, streetlights, all, all the good infrastructure in the, in the subdivision. The special tax rule is necessary because back when the bonds were originally issued, they called for a maximum tax. And not only have we refunded the bonds at a lesser interest to save our residents money, but the, the SSAs are performing. So everybody is either paying their taxes or the taxes are being sold successfully at tax sale. And so therefore, all the property taxes are being paid. So you can tell from the charts that were in my agenda supplement that SSAA number 13 is, if you're in a single-family home, the maximum tax that was called for in the original bond ordinance for tax year 23, collection in, in 2024 was 1,0731, and the taxes that are being extended are 1,079, saving the residents $650. And so the chart falls out savings for single-family homes, duplexes, and townhouses. Any questions?
We refinanced those 2019, 2018.
Refunded?
No, we, we, in the bonds, well, we, 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 didn't we refinance the bonds?
We did, yes.
Because that was a significant savings as well.
That, that's what this is, yes, yep. Those refunding of the bonds led to this, to this, a large portion of the savings, yes.
Okay. Any other, any questions for Ms. Lyons?
And these, these type of SSAs are no longer allowed in the state of Illinois, correct?
I believe that they're still allowed, but the, the county will not collect the taxes any longer. They're collecting on the ones that were in place until, I believe it was 2014 that they would no longer collect those funds for the village. We could establish another one of these things, but we would be responsible for issuing the tax bills. And we were talking about that a little bit earlier. We actually had one of those in place. That was, the bond was paid off a few years ago during my tenure. And it was for the water system that was placed at the truck stop. Each of those undeveloped and developed properties were, you know, rather than being taxed based on single-family duplex or townhome, it was that those properties within that special service area were taxed on whether or not they were developed or undeveloped. And then, and then the size of the property. But that one has been paid off. But just like that one, we had to produce the tax bills and send them out and, and collect them.
And then looking at this, similar to that one, when the maturity gates of these hit, which like Tuscany Woods, I saw was 2035, then this tax goes away.
That's correct, yes. The, so it'll be tax year 2035, collected in 2036, and then the next year there will be zero, zero additional tax. And there is an option for our residents if they are able to do so or so inclined, they can pay these off earlier. Awesome.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion approving the 2023 administrative report for SSA number 13.
Go.
Second. Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Okay.
So, oh, go ahead, oh, we can announce it.
We'd ask your consideration of an ordinance abating special taxes levied for the year 2023, that year collected in 2024, to pay debt service on the SSA bonds issued for SSAA number 13.
Okay, so, and just like we were discussing, if you take no action tonight, the county clerk will extend the maximum tax called for in the original bond. And that would be overtaxing our residents, so that's why we're asking to have this abatement done. Or it's a court, partial abatement, not a full abatement.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance abating special taxes, taxes levied for the 2023 tax year, collectible in 24, to pay debt service on SSA bonds issued for SSA number 13. Second. Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'd ask your consideration of a resolution approving the 2023 administrative report for SSA number 14, including the amended special tax rule for calendar year 2023.
So SSA number 14 is the Lakewood subdivision. SSA is very same situation as Tuscany Woods. These bonds were both issued in the same timeframe, so again, the last year of levy will be 2035 for collection in 2036. Again, these bonds were refunded, and this was, this one actually has quite a bit higher tax than, than Tuscany Woods. But we're still saving the residents with a single-family home, $659.70 this year, and a duplex, $387.70.
Any questions about this? I'll entertain a motion to approve a resolution approving the 2023 administrative report for SSA number 14. Go move.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose.
Thank you. We'd ask your consideration of an ordinance abating special taxes levied for the year 2023, that year, but, oh, 20, sorry, yeah, that's right, yeah, 2024, to pay debt service on the SSA bonds issued for SSA number 14.
This is the same story? If we don't tell them, they're going to charge at the original rate?
That's correct.
Awesome. I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance abating the special taxes levied for the 2023 tax year, collectible in 24, to pay debt service on the SSA bond issued for SSA 14.
Go move. Second.
First and second, questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose.
Now, we'd ask your consideration of an ordinance abating taxes levied for the 2023 tax year, collectible in 2024, to pay debt service on the 1.7, 1.175 million general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2016.
Right?
So this is one of the village's bonds. Again, if no action was taken, the county clerk would extend the, the taxes called for the bond payments per the original ordinance. The village has sufficient funds. We had pledged municipal utility tax to make these bond payments, and there is sufficient funds to do that, so we'd like to abate these. And again, as I mentioned at the last meeting, it's imperative that we, we do this because if we fail to abate these taxes and actually collected the tax, it would significantly impair our ability to issue bonds like this, alternate revenue bonds like this again, because this is like a payment of last resort, I will all call it, if we levy tax.
Any questions? Alan? Sorry. I, I will entertain a motion to approve an ordinance abating taxes levied on the 2023 tax year, collectible in 24, to pay debt service on the 1.175 million dollar general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2016. So move.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Yep.
Now, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance regarding the Paid Leave For All Workers Act. You have in your packet a, an agenda supplement for Ms. Lyons. This does have some legal ramifications, though, this is new legislation, so I'd like to have Mr. DeSala to just address this briefly.
Of course. In the beginning of the 2023 legislative session, the Illinois sent a bill 208 passed both houses, and was signed by Governor Pritzker. The legislation requires all covered Illinois employers to provide covered employees up to 40 hours of leave to be used for any purpose. The legislation only applies to, does not apply to school districts or park districts, but does apply to municipalities, even though there are legislative efforts to have it exempted from municipalities. The village, with the passage of this ordinance, it would default to the village's current existing policy for paid leave rather than adopting the state policy. There is no home rule exemption, but the Department of Labor in the state of Illinois said that, even though we are not a home rule unit, that all municipalities are governed by this. So my recommendation would be to pass this to adopt our current existing policy, which we do not see the empowerment, rather than go to the state policy.
The new state law, then, is five days of paid leave for every employee and five days for vacation?
I mean, PTO. Anything.
Okay, but there's not a separate one of five more days for sickness or sickness?
No.
It's just five days.
It's just one bucket. And you don't, and you don't have to give time, you don't have to give notice, you're supposed to be able to give as much as you want.
Are they working on changes so the park districts are included?
Well, the first change that I've heard about is that municipalities would be exempted. And we thought that that would be done in this legislative session. And instead of that coming through, there was a Department of Labor statement that said that home rule units are actually not able to exempt out, which means that their intent, if you read into that, their intent was to include municipalities because they've already analyzed how municipalities are going to be governed. I can look up and try to figure out what the status is this with regards to schools and park districts, but ultimately, because we're municipal, our focus has been on municipality for this.
Just following the I M M L, it's the state's, the park districts were actually removed at one point, so everybody amendment, so they were included.
So if I'm understanding correctly, the recommendation is to pass this because our current policy exceeds the minimum requirements of the state law.
That's correct.
Allows us to continue with our current policy rather than employees losing paid time off.
That's correct. So this ordinance, or not, sorry, this state law is passing a minimum requirement for everyone that doesn't have something like we have on the books. Okay.
The additional thing that we're doing, however, I think is important to say, is we will be offering a one-day's paid leave for every employee. So right now, that would include part-time people. So let's say we have a part-time police officer that, just as an example, that works a 12-hour shift and has, you know, like, so we're going to give those people one day's pay as well. So they would be offered up to 12 hours of pay for any, any purposes.
I, in the analysis here, it says part-timers would have one hour of paid time off for every four hours worked, up to 40 hours.
That is the legislation, but that's not what we're doing.
So are we okay being less than what the legislation is?
Yes. The uncomfortable that the ordinance is presented is compliant with the law. It also tracks the I M M L ordinance. But I'm comfortable with this ordinance.
And this legislation is bound to change again, so don't be surprised if there's another one of these that comes before us after the spring legislative session, because there's a lot of unhappy people about this, about how it was done, and people are exempt, like, certain groups were exempted and that kind of stuff, so, or, and then there's, you know, there's a lot of companies in general, like, private companies that now have to adopt similar policies, right? And it's costing them a lot of money, so like I said, this is going to change again, like everything else, so don't be surprised at this. But I tend to agree, the safest course of action is if we can, just stick with what we're doing, because then we won't need to change it when the law changes. Any questions?
I have just one request on the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
To make an edit. And I apologize if I missed this, the other ones we just passed. I should say, New York, Hampshire, King and McHenry County.
Uh, yeah, we will make that change.
Under the.
Yeah, under both the title and on there. Obviously, that does not void the ordinance, but we will make that change, get rid of the other ones as well.
A hundred and fifty years of, of just under a hundred and fifty years of being in one county is a hundred and fifty.
I just, I just saw it, and that's why.
That's good.
It's not material, but.
No, it's important. We had one person draft all these, and so we'll make sure it gets changed.
Cool.
And we updated the templates last week.
We updated all the templates last week to ensure that King and McHenry are both coming.
Thank you.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance regarding the only paid leave for all workers act.
So move.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
I have one, I have, all in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we have, we would ask your consideration of a, of a resolution approving professional services agreement with EEI for design engineering for lead service line replacement plan in the amount of $19,948. You may recall that we're required to have this inventory completed by April 24th, April 24 next, April. And then after that, we'll begin the remediation process. You have an agenda supplement in your packet from EEI. And Mr. Paulson's on the line if you have any questions. Just, probably put this straight forward.
How, how is this different than what we already contracted then?
This is, this is the next phase. The first part was to, to do the notifications and go out and do some of the, have our staff as well, send it all the mailers. If you remember, we got cards printed and EEI did all that work for us.
Right.
And then now that we've completed the inventory, just about completed the inventory, now they have to take that information and put it in a form that the state requires.
Oh, that, that part wasn't included in the first episode.
Correct. Tim, would you like to add anything to that?
Uh, sorry, I, my meeting cut out. I just got back on, but.
We're just talking about lead service line replacement.
Yes.
But this is the, the next phase.
Correct. So, and there's, if you'll, it stated somewhere in the scope, you know, there's like two or three other phases after this, so it's a long road, but yeah, this is the next phase. It's due on April 15th.
Is this going to be enough time? I mean, this is in three and a half months to get this.
Yeah, I did see Dennis is one to handle. He'll be doing all three studies, and I spoke to Steve about this again. Yes, he believes that finishing.
Okay. My other concern is, and I can't tell what page it's to, maybe? I can't tell what pages. Well, scope of services attachment B, 216, 218 is the page. Where it says that the village has identified eight lead service lines, and there are 381 that we don't know, whether they're lead or not, and that we have to include them as assuming lead. So we're going from eight to 381. What was the total number of lines that were looked at? I mean, because I'm trying to figure out if we've got a percentage that we've looked at already, 1,000 lines in, you know, in there, and I'm just throwing that out, and eight had lead. And then to go ahead and assume, assume 100% of the other ones are not lead is a huge difference.
And we have to assume that until we've actually examined them or until our.
Right.
residents have responded to the survey. But between now and next April, we will continue to try and get inside the houses and find out, reduce the number. We're convinced that there's not that many.
Yeah.
We have to prove it. So Mark has a really good idea where they are, because we know where the mains are, that these are coming off of. So I think by, by next April, we'll have a much better handle on a lower number of lead service lines.
We've been, we've been asking residents now for over a year.
Yeah, about a year.
About a year, trying to figure, you know, we sent a postcard from knocking on doors. It just.
Did talk about that.
We, we did talk about that. I, I think as a, as a board, whether or not we had the authority to turn the water off to get them to answer it.
And Mark just prefers to knock on doors, and he and Sean were doing it over weekends for a while because people were home. We got to a point now where we're comfortable that we have enough information. We just need to complete the, the next eight or months or so.
But I, I guess, I'm not asking a question that you're not listening. That number, right, that 300 number, because it's listed in here, doesn't commit us to assume the responsibility if we find out they are, they are not.
That's right. Since we can prove that they're not lead, and they'll come up, that number will be reduced.
Okay.
We're certainly going to have to delegate them until, go ahead, Tim, sorry.
I would say that's correct, but they, you know, they have to be listed on this, on the April 15th inventory, and they have to be listed until we know that they're not lead service.
Can you give the total number that we've actually got identified?
As.
All part of it.
It was actually.
The total number we looked at, I, I don't have that in front of me.
I think the number was around 600, right? It's like, I, I really, I remember that we were able to easily identify when our code was changed and when the houses were built after, so.
We eliminated most of it. I think we, I think we had about six or seven hundred houses that were in the total area.
It was like 1985, we changed the code, and we knew anything before that, we had to look at it. Anything after that, don't, don't have it. And we were able to isolate a certain area of town, and I want to say the number was around 700.
We found all eight in a line in, in one area too, so we really have a really great idea of where they're at. These 381 are kind of spread out. Because, because they're in an older section of town, they have to be included on that list.
So is every service line being residence of some core, of some kind?
I believe so, yes.
So, and that includes also like multifamilies, like if it's an apartment building or?
It depends on whether, yeah, whether or not it has a single line. Some of those, you know, like the duplex might have two service lines going into the house. So, you know, they would both be assumed to be.
Okay.
The same, but these are all in an older section of town with similar in the house.
And if you recall, it doesn't matter what, what side of the line is lead, what, what side of the B-box is lead. If it's lead on one side, then we have to replace both sides. If it's galvanized on one side and lead on the other, we have to replace both sides. It's not a matter of, like typically, if there's a water main break, we would be responsible, like a, a service line break, we're responsible for the, from the street to the main, that's us, and then anything from the B-box to the houses, then, not in this case. We have to follow it.
So we're covering the residences having to change.
We're still covering, we're not talking about paying for anything right now.
But that's, but that's.
Because that's the next step.
That's.
Right.
The mandate will be that the village will be required to pay anything on our side of the B-box. We will not be required to pay the resident's side. That'll be up to the village, whether we want to or whether the resident will have to pay.
Okay. So back to my number then, you're saying there were about 700 and 381 are unknown.
Right. We, we know that there are eight that are solid, and until we, until we verify the others, we have to cease.
But it's like half, so we've identified half, and we're still working, so 50% is what we would count.
And I would say probably two-thirds of that half that we've already accomplished were knocking on doors, rather than people getting back postcards.
I'm just, and I'm not saying anything bad about us for anything, it's just, it's a lot of work, and we've only gotten half gone through.
And the majority of it could be handled by the postcard in the beginning, which was, you know, where they gave, they'd send pictures and this and that, and.
It's easier for the employees to give up their weekends, like Mr. Hedges said, and knock on doors.
Yeah.
Than it is to send back a postcard.
Yeah. The residents just will, they are not responding, and that's our problem.
That's just because that's an assumption that they would have, they, they ignore it, they don't have to pay it.
I don't.
I think there was some concern, absolutely, because we had somebody come to the window and said exactly that. I don't want to respond to the survey because I don't, I, I feel like I might have lead, and I don't want to, I can't afford to pay for it. And, you know, we said, you know, that, that's not on the table at this point, don't, you know, don't be concerned, but we really do need to know, so. Um, yeah, okay. So that may be a reasonable question.
Well, I have a question on the, the proposal itself, Mr. Paulson.
Yeah.
With, in regards to the numbers we're discussing of the 389, knowing eight of them definitely are 380 or unknown, part of the plan on page 219 of the packet, but it's under task two, initial LS LR. Uh, 2.3 and 2.4 is probably some of the bigger requirements of the plan, at least the way it looks, is developing the one-year, five-year, 10-year, 15-year, and 20-year goals, and the plan on how to replace these detailed accounting of costs associated with replacing them. How is this potentially going to be affected once those 381 are known? If they are at, let's say, the same ratio, now all eight were in one area, so let's assume maybe there's one or two areas that are like that, so let's add 16 more, whatever, we're going to add more. Because are we going to have to come back and ha, and pay to have all of these revised under new goals and new detailed accounting of costs with what those finalized numbers are?
If you, if you look on the page, I, the answer is that we'll have to be revisions presented to I E P A. If you look at the, you know, the page above, there's an update to April 15, 2025, 2026, and then a final replacement plan has to be in place by April 15, 2027. So there is a submit due to I E P A once a year for the next three years after this one.
And this S O W covers, or this proposal covers every single one of those?
This recovers, excuse me, just this first one this year.
Just that's two.
It's going to be another 20,000.
So we're going to pay.
I don't believe it'll be another 20,000 too. I, I can, you know, check back on that, but my understanding is a lot of the framework will be put in place with this first report, and we won't have to redo a lot of that setup work that's done with the initial report.
I mean.
So, but, but to my question, Mr. Paulson, every year that this has to be submitted, whether it's at the same price or not, we're going to have to pay EEI to redo this report every year for the next four years?
If, yes, if that's requested of us. I mean, Mark, you know, asked us to assist with this, and we've been, presented the proposal to assist with that, so if, if it's, if assistance is needed in the next years, we would provide that, yes.
It's conceivable that this could become rather routine after the first year, and we may not need outside assistance to do it.
I have a question on page 214. Under standard terms and conditions, third paragraph down, construction, engineering, and inspection. It spells out the engineer won't supervise direct control, have any authority over any contractor, or any authority over, or be responsible for any of the means, methods. When we start this project, are we going to have a city employee watching the contractor the whole time, or?
So this is, this is theirs, we go through this like almost every time. This is part of their standard professional service.
I understand that, but this is a lead thing. This is different than, you know, Johnny's concrete or a building.
Yeah, there will be any construction during this site.
Right. So we will have an EEI inspector on site?
There is no site. There's no construction. This is just.
We'll have a, let me rephrase it, Mr. Hedges. We'll have an EEI instruct, inspector on each lead service removed. Is that better?
Uh, that's not, there won't be no lead service removals in this period of time period, so.
Right, I understand that, but the scope of work goes on every single.
If there is any construction or any type of service removal, I guess EEI would be on site.
Okay. And I, I do take, read the third paragraph, because EEI doesn't, doesn't have a, a thing in the game here. It's out of their control, but we're going to have to pay for an inspector to be on site to watch the lead service be removed. So I, I think that that term condition for this project should change the language. If EEI is going to be there and we're, the village is going to pay for an inspector to watch them remove the lead properly and install new copper, then they should be responsible.
Um, safety will be.
That's, Toby, I'm sorry, but that's just not happening during this contract period. It's, this paragraph is the standard paragraph in all their contracts. If there were construction, it would be different. But there is no construction in this project.
It's just for the file. Right, I get that.
And that's it.
And, and part of the expensive is, if you remember, it's been a couple of years almost now, I think, but there's actually a required to put up a, a website or a portal that people can look at, including public. And I think they can get to it from the I E P A website as well. So all this information has to be put in a proper format created by.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, one question. Mr. Paulson, on the attachment C estimate of level of effort?
Yeah.
What, and, and it may be explained earlier, so I apologize if it is. What are the workshops on 3.1 and that table? I understand the initial L S L R plan and the breakdown you have there, and the report preparation and presentation, I understand that breakdown, but what, what are the workshop? What's a workshop? I know what it is, in this case.
So, yeah, so once we make our preliminary findings, put everything together from tasks two, everything that's required to compile, compile, then we will work, you know, we're required to sit down with village staff and go over those and make sure, you know, there'll be options, and we'll have to determine what the villagers' preferences are. You know, there'll be options for how you're going to, you know, what options you might off, offer residents for funding assistance in replacing their side of the service, those kind of things. So it'll be a presentation with, interactive with village staff to finalize what the village preferences will be that will be per, put into the report to I E P A.
So that's a staff meeting, basically, to read out of the report.
Correct. I think workshop is, is the term used in the, in the legislation.
Just what we were teaching in the workshop.
We will probably workshop back to the board after we're finished.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Hedges, Ms. Lyons, or Mr. Paulson? I'll entertain a motion approving our professional services agreement with EEI for design engineering for lead service line replacement plan in the amount of $19,948.00.
Go move.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I guess my comment, I know we have to do this by legislation. My comment is just, I feel like we're having them do a bunch of work. It's going to be invalidated once we figure out how many true lead service lines we have. Even the workshop of what they kind of go over options, what costs are going to be. It just feels like that three eighty-one may come way down and I get, we have to get this through. I understand that. It just feels like there's gonna be a lot of work in that report that the very next year is gonna be very different than what this report will be.
Actually, I hope that's the case. We hopefully find better, less lead, lead outlines in the name of her.
Yeah.
And, and I echo that too. And it is difficult with as many contracts as we have that go up in amounts throughout this entire meeting. It, it's a little overwhelming. And I, you know, just feeling like we're doing, paying over and over and over again for project after project after project. They come back again slightly different and we pay for again. So it's a frustration on my, you know, for me, I can say, just because it, it's and maybe they're all mandates from the state. It's just, it's, it's overwhelming and it's frustrating.
They're not all mandates from the state. You see, the next one we're gonna talk about is, is engineering and repair of one of our wells. So this is, we have outside engineering. If we had inside engineering, probably we'd paint three full-time engineers and this is, still wouldn't have every discipline that we need. That's why we outsource. So we can't flex up and we have mandatory things and we spent, what, six hours on a Saturday talking about a lot of other things as well.
I think this is an opportunity where residents can help bring that cost down. If we could just get these surveys done.
Right.
I mean, so these three hundred and eighty-one unknowns could actually lower all the pain stuff.
Yeah, I mean, my comment about the report is basically gonna be invalidated. It's not a reflection of the staff or the, or the, no, not on the past year. It's the fact that when we don't have the information, we're not paying for something that I'm making an assumption here, but may be useless in truly budgeting and figuring out what the cost of this program is until we really know what that number is. And unfortunately, we're not gonna know that until a lot more work and staff hours. And this is just with E E I, but I mentioned what the cost of staff time to do this is gonna be.
And what we've already spent trying to get to this point, right? We have an opportunity here to spend those funds wiser or decrease funds collected, however you wanna look at it, but we're gonna need residential help with this.
We could use about seventy volunteers if what probably is, and we'd like to get some of the residents.
Do you like to walk?
Not the time she walks in the morning.
I do have, I do have a first and a second. We are spending, um, money, so I will ask for a vote, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Powell Straining?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we ask your consideration of a resolution approving professional services agreement with E P I for design, engineering, and construction for well number nine water treatment plant. Uh, Kationic exchange media replacement in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. You have a, you have a supplement in your packet. And it will be an answer to any questions you may have.
We already approved the purchase of this new, they're doing engineering, we're right.
So what we, uh, just recently was the refurbishing of the ballast in the current U V system. That requires, you know, that's kind of a patch.
There's a get us.
Yep, and this, this is the new system that'll take us a while. We need to design it.
So we haven't purchased it yet. This is to figure out what it is we need and what that cost of purchase would be. Gotcha.
That's, that's the next one, actually. This is for the, to, to change out the media filter in your wastewater treatment, in the water treatment plant. So.
The merit engineering. Yeah.
I apologize. I got confused. I thought we were talking about, we were all confused. Yes.
This twenty-seven and change is gonna go to replace the media filter. Okay. And this will last, if I'm reading this correctly, this new, this change will last another ten to fifteen years?
Right. The media filters are older than that.
We stretch, we stretch it lasting about twenty years while we're, living on borrowed time there for a while.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and this is just a piece of this project as well. This is just the design.
No, this one is design and construction. This is to, to have it all replaced.
So this covered the engineering to figure out what exactly we need and where and how, then to oversee the construction itself while it's being put in.
Correct.
And we approved the budget for the purchase of this media replacement?
Yes.
Okay, so we've already, because I'm reading the last line that says, um, and assuming no significant place related to bidding and procurement of replacement media.
Right. Um, no, no, no.
We haven't, yeah.
Correct. Correct. So it is in the budget to replace the media this year. Um, yes. And so this is, this is a piece of it. We will have to go through the formal bidding process and they do expect, we were told, um, to have this completed by before April thirtieth.
Okay.
So we'll still have to pay for, I'm just trying to, the media itself, as well as the in, in, um,
Install, yeah.
Installation, thank you, is what I'm looking for. So we still have, and just ballpark, what is the, um, cost of just the media itself? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm.
It's in the capital budget.
Okay, okay, okay.
But it's budgeted for.
Yeah, it's already, that's already.
It's around three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions?
I ju- I mean, I just want to say out loud, I mean, the, the importance of this is, you know, this helps to remove the radium and the barium from the water. So it is a very important thing that we need. Um, so I, I just wanted that on the record while we're talking about costs and everything else. It is something that's crucial in the community.
I don't entertain a motion of res- approving a professional resolution approving professional services agreement with E E I for design, engineering, and construction for well number nine water treatment.
Can't, can't then that?
Can't.
Exchange media replacement in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments?
I go back, yes, uh, for the, because this includes oversight of the construction. I go back to what Trustee Coco was saying, and this time it's on page two thirty-six of the packet. Where it says the engineer neither guarantees the performance of any contractor nor assumes responsibility for contractors' failure to furnish a, a working accordance with the contract documents. Isn't that the role of managing the construction of this?
Well, we, you know, we are out there to make sure that they're following the specs and the design. But if, also if the contractor does something wrong, it's their responsibility to correct it and fix it, not, you know, not the engineers. It's our responsibility to note that they've done something to wrong and to catch it and bring it to the village's attention and make sure that it gets, uh, you know, repaired.
Is it E E I's responsibility to stop the job until they correct it?
If it's that type of a situation, uh, correct, it would be our responsibility to bring it to the village's attention where the village would decide, you know, the appropriate action as far as if it's stopping work. Or, you know, uh, we sit down to decide how to address it and then it's the contractor's responsibility to make the correction.
So ultimately, ultimately, if the job needs to stop, it's Mr. Hedges' responsibility to make sure the job gets stopped, correct? It'd be no different than if he were to have an engineer on staff, the engineer would report it to the village manager and the village manager would stop the job.
Well, there are certain circumstances that they might stop their job on site. Certain circumstances, like safety, that sort of thing.
Well, I think the concern from the board is, is that par- that statement in the contract may well seem as if they won't.
And the, and the one above it directly says shall not supervise direct control or have any authority over any contractor work nor have authority over, or be responsible for when it keeps going on.
That's the concern.
Because we don't tell them how to do, you know, the work. We just present, present the specification that they have to, you know, adhere to. Um, and it's, you know, it's there. That speaks to the means and methods of how the contractor accomplishes the work.
Let me make a suggestion, please, because this is coming up quite a bit. I think we should change our practice at our side. Um, I would suggest that you amend this, um, ordinance or resolution to remove that section. And then in the future, I'll ask E E I to remove the sections that not apply to the contract that they presented to us. We have a lot of.
This one does because of construction engineering.
So I'm okay with, uh, amending the motion on the table, um, to remove the sections of concern from the board.
Look, this one does have construction.
Understood, but we want them to have some oversight.
I'm sorry, I just want to ask Mr. Sally from Big Overs, it sounds like we're talking about red line and it's need to go back.
Right, I mean, because part of this, and it's a good point, obviously, the, the idea to expedite this to get this done is a good one, but um, it's also the idea, will E E I accept the contract with those changes, which I think is part of what you're getting at, trustee. Um, because what these talk about is the means and those operations, which are liability line between the contractor and us rather than the engineer and us, who serves almost like an auditor on this situation. Um, so, well, we could do that, obviously procedurally, but if it is a substantive thing, I don't know if E E I would accept those changes. They proposed to us, they said that they're gonna do it this way, and now we're saying substantively, we're changing your risk management, because that's what this comes down to. It's a risk management provision.
If I could just, Tim, I mean, this is a contract to supervise construction, or it has a paragraph that says you're not gonna supervise construction.
That's hard to accept.
I don't think that's what the paragraph is, is, you know, referring to. I just, I've lost my place. Sorry, could you give me the page number again?
Page two thirty-six in the packet, but it's page one under standard terms and conditions under construction, engineering, and inspection.
We're doing years of sewer work. We've had an inspector from, uh, either the village or inspection firm, and they're tough. And they, they, they got the reputation where if you went into their town, you better not even think of cheating because you're gonna get in trouble. Only problem I got is we're paying in engineering enterprises to have an inspector out there who has no swing in the game. So if something goes wrong, he's gotta contact Mr. Hedges. If Mr. Hedges is in a meeting, he's gotta wait.
Well, we, we would, we would stop them in the field if something's wrong, but then, you know, to resolve it and move forward, it has to go through the village.
Okay, well, I'm good with that, but you just told me earlier that it wouldn't.
Well, I, you know, I said that we would go to the village first, you know, stop work order, yes. But something, as soon as we notice something, we will make, take an action in the field.
The authority comes from the village, but we authorized both safety and E E I to shut down jobs, to stop work, and to reject inspections if they're not correct.
Like I said, I think the concern of the board is they, they just want somebody to have some skin in the game. By the way that the contract reads, it doesn't appear.
They, they don't have any liability in the game here. I think, I mean, I'm listening to what trustee Kelly read. I'm not reading it myself right now. But if, I mean, they're gonna be supervising the project, they're gonna be supervising construction. So Jimmy, if it says they're not, you should agree to that.
We're, we're going to be.
And that's the ultimate question.
But we're not, you know, direct, yeah, it's a, I'd have to, you know. I can't, I, I don't, I'd have to go back, you know, to our liability carrier and our attorney to change our standard conditions. But I think that, you know, we're not dr- we don't, it's supervised in the sense that we don't tell this guy to, you know, turn this, you know, wrench this direction and it's not supervised. We're observing the construction and making sure that what they're putting together is being put together and installed per the specifications that are in our plans and our documents.
An explanation. Another example, we, the one mile water line, we contracted out. We actually hired, E E I actually supervised that. As the, as, because it was our work, not a, not somebody else's work.
Right. Well, we were the resident engineer, but it was under these same provisions.
I was just gonna say, this is the same contract that we've been using for years now with E E I. This is a very important project that we, it's gonna be very close to being completed this fiscal year to begin with. That's from Mark and Steve asked it, it is on this board meeting, so. If this language is a problem, I appreciate if you could consider it tonight and we'll look at it in the future, but it's the same contract we've been using for years.
So, Mr. Paulson, just for the record, you are saying that E E I will have somebody there observing, we'll use that term, the construction and the work of the contractor, and should it not be in line with any of the engineering documents or the specs of the project, or for any reason be a concern of safety or or those motions, you will stop the project immediately.
Or take some.
Or take action and.
Yes.
The village.
Yes, that's what we do as part of our construction observation duties, yes.
Okay.
And then, then we will coordinate, you know, up the line with the village and whatever action needs to be taken. A lot of things can be corrected in the field. Other things have to go, you know, go beyond that.
In all these standards and terms, is there anything that repeat offenses will sub, be, they'll be subjected to a stiff fine?
Seven hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Yeah, and that's a village, correct, yeah. Mr. Hedges, I, I completely understand, and I do think maybe post this, there's a conversation with E E I about you. When they're saying that they're supervising construction as part of a bid, they don't use the word that we shall not supervise.
Supervising construction, that means as our agent, as opposed to enforcing our codes.
Thank you, everyone. And I think I have a first and a second, and then we were in the question or comment stage. Um, with that, I'll ask Mr. Kirk to call the rule.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Powell Straining?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Fodor?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Okay, awesome. Somebody announce the result, please.
A six-year.
Motion passes, I think, would be appropriate.
No, I'm sorry, motion passes.
But, of course, just so, just so for the record. Okay, with that, we would ask, um, your consideration of an ordinance amending chapter five of the building regulations regarding fire alarms.
You know? No. We've got one more engineer speaking, I'm sorry.
I was trying to.
It's my U B.
A resolution.
I was hoping.
Professional services agreement with E E I for design, oh, wait, engineering, uh, for the wastewater treatment facility U V system replacement in the amount of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. So we might have already discussed this one.
In part, in part.
We're zooming forward.
We have another agenda supplement from Steve Dennis in here.
This, uh, Miss Lyons explained that to us as part of the last. So does anyone have any questions about this? It's the same contract. Unstoppable.
We could say the next contract.
All right, we'll, we'll get there. This meeting's gonna end whether we're ready for it or not. Does anyone have any questions about this? I entertain a resolution approving a professional service agreement with E E I for design, engineering, for the wastewater treatment facility U V system replacement in the amount of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and zero cents.
So.
Second, questions, comments, concerns? Can you just put in a couple, please?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Powell Straining?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Pope? Ms. Fodor? Sorry. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the motion passed six-year.
Can I, we just voted on it, but can I ask just one question then? Um, on, on page two seventy-eight, which is page nine of this particular one, um, it says exclusions and it talks about the electrical distribution and conduits and modification. Do we anticipate any electrical problems with this? Because this is, this is just for the U V stuff, but should they get in there and start to find electrical stuff? That's all excluded. So I'm just trying to get a feel then if.
It's excluded in their price.
Yeah, well, and then it won't be covered, so we'd have to go back for additional.
If something additional was discovered.
Right, which is fine. I'm not complaining about that, but I'm asking, do we anticipate, based on everything out there in public works, that there'll be electrical issues as well?
No, I would rule it included.
Okay. That's all, that's all I need. I know we already.
Mark the tape.
Thank you.
Mark the tape. Okay, next, we have an ordinance amending chapter five building regulations regarding fire alarms.
Tom, would you like to address this, please?
Yes, sir. First one. So in March twenty twenty-three, the village board adopted ordinance twenty-three dash oh-three, uh, which were requirements for sprinkler alarms and which eliminated the requirements for sprinkler, fire sprinkler systems in class S storage buildings. It was an assumption, assumption given. And then Berlin, when, uh, the village eliminated those requirements, it also eliminated the requirement for fire alarms. it also eliminated the requirement for fire alarms. Because you only fire alarm when you have fire sprinkler system. So if there's a new storage building, they don't need to put in either, which is a life safety issue. So this ordinance is amending that to require fire alarms for all new construction, major remodels. There isn't, there is an exception or exemption for smaller square footage, only five dollars, square feet or less. So that's what's probably today to consider those tax numbers to section five because there is five five, we have buildings code to require fire alarms for all new construction and major remodels.
And Chief Herman and Inspector Claussen have been involved with this amendment, and I believe Chief Herman would support it as well.
Correct.
So I guess the obvious question would be, since we enacted this ordinance or in codified this in twenty twenty-three, have there been any projects, projects since that time that have, I guess, taken advantage of our ordinance and not installed a fire alarm system?
There is one that's been a little rather difficult about that, but we've reached an agreement on that now.
Yeah, we came to a compromise. It's not to my standard, but we did come to a compromise. This will eliminate that from ever happening again.
Okay.
Leave us with the, what we did then for the township. Because, you know, that outlines it in the, in the memo. An area of floors less than four thousand, floors less than three stories above grade, an area of all floors in the building is less than twenty-four thousand feet. And that's not included.
Township building?
Yeah.
Those have fire alarms.
Okay, but we allowed that as an exception.
Were they going to build a garage or something?
They have a fire alarm. Everything is fire alarmed.
They don't have, they don't have.
They do not have a sprinkler, they have fire alarms. This is specifically addressing the fire alarm system.
Okay, so it doesn't have anything.
This doesn't really apply to sprinklers. That's already amended in the codes.
Okay.
Okay, there was, we overlooked, when we revised the codes, we overlooked putting fire alarm systems. We took out the sprinkler for storage, we forgot to put in the fire alarm. So that's revising this so that now if that happens again, it's there.
Okay.
Okay, so the analysis then is, the analysis says it's in the best interest of the village to acquire fire sprinkler systems to be installed. But we're not talking about sprinkler systems, we're talking about fire alarms.
We're putting them back where they belong now, in the areas where they don't belong. Does that make sense? So previously, you only required a sprinkler system if you had an alarm. Sorry, you only had to have alarm.
Alarm.
If you required a sprinkler system. So when we removed sprinklers, we removed alarms by accident.
That's the typo, trustee Kelly, she's a fire alarm system, I apologize.
Okay.
So that's.
So can I ask where the, the new construction project was? And is that, do you need a guess? Just one guess.
It's storage units.
Okay, I, and I only ask because I know we've got a lot going on downtown, and I just want to make sure there's no residents above that project.
Okay, now, this, this is a, I mean, this is a large storage facility.
Right.
Got more storage units over there than residents.
It's, it's kind of unique in the sense that we haven't any built for a while. The ones that are built do have alarms, the ones that we do have in town.
And the reason I ask is I don't want to put a resident safety in their home at risk.
Chief Herman and I need a one of those.
Okay, no, I, I, I know that.
So other than the typo that was referenced, do you have any questions about the ordinance as it is?
Just, I'm just asking the chief, did you have a hand in putting this together? Were you consulted as we were drafting this ordinance with the changes?
With the changes? Yes, correct.
Okay, you were there.
Yeah, Mark Claus, who's my fire inspector.
Okay.
Him and I sat down and went through it to make sure we were all on the same page with the revision.
Okay, and you're, so you're good with it?
I'm very, yes.
All right, that's good.
He didn't sign up to speak public comment, so we know that he's in support.
Take me out.
I'll, I'll take an entertaining motion to approve an ordinance amending chapter five building regulations regarding fire alarms.
So moved.
With the typo.
So moved.
Right, your comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Good night.
The next.
I believe the attorney has spoken to you about the next.
Yeah, so the next one is an ordinance, just for transparency sake, it's about alcohol writing. There's some information that's not ready, so I will ask for a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Sure.
It will, January eighteenth. Thank you. I have a first and a second, questions, comments?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, before you, you have the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule. Excitement? We haven't, we haven't added anything this year, everything's the same as it was last year, just changed pace. Any questions, comments, or concerns about the holiday schedule? Entertaining a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule.
So moved.
Question? Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Motion is approved. Get it. I just need to hear the motion's approved for the record.
All right. Next, we have the annual board meeting schedule. Do you have any questions about the annual board meeting schedule?
I do, why are we not meeting on January fourth?
There was kind of a conversation we had with staff, and some trustees aren't going to be around for the first meeting. Holiday, with the way that the holidays all fall and stuff, so rather than cancel the meeting, we just said, you know what, staff's been busting it all year long. Let's give them another week to, to not have to prepare a board packet, and then everybody doesn't have to come back on January fourth. You know, teachers and that kind of thing.
Okay.
That may have to be away with the holidays, like taking advantage of breaks and that kind of thing.
Okay, I can't keep having meetings.
That's why, that's purely why, there's not, there's no.
The blah blah.
Nothing, no, no other reason.
We have two meetings, though, two months that we're going to only have one meeting. So the January one and the July one. I understand that July is July fourth, so I get that. But that's sufficient for getting everything passed and all the bills paid.
In conversations that I had with the board or with the staff about it, when the idea was, were brought up, was that if there was ever a need that it were a special meeting, we would call it. Does anybody, I mean, everybody's okay with that, right? We'll take the risk of having to get called in if we have to?
Yeah.
The one question I have, do any of these, I don't know, in Coon Creek days, do any of these conflict with that? Mr. Coon Creek?
You might get, you might get one meeting.
Why would that?
It's off.
We can meet during Coon Creek.
Well, we can.
We can, but half of us won't be there.
Half are on the committee, so we may not have this forum.
Oh, okay. All right, never mind, we're just answering.
What is it?
Don't know, but it doesn't conflict. We'll tell you.
It's August eighth through August eleventh.
Oh, so it doesn't.
Okay.
So trustee Robinson was correct. It doesn't matter because it doesn't. Started, any other questions? Entertaining a motion to approve the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments, concerns, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Six zero, as a matter of fact.
That's what you're supposed to be saying every.
Hey, look, we'll, we'll figure this meeting thing out soon. Next, we have staff reports, so we have the financial report. Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
You bet.
And the engineering report, Mr. Wilson's online. And the police report is here as well. And, and it's a little under the weather, so I would appreciate if you asked Lieutenant Neblock any question that you have for an indefinite answer.
I have one, page three thirty-six, dealing with the scorecard.
Okay.
For Hampton Police Department's scorecard. And just questions for traffic warnings. And looking at the numbers, and I'm, I'm just kind of surprised at how many warnings. There's three hundred thirty-six on earth. At, at the bottom, it gets traffic stops, tickets, warnings. And I was just, why do we have so many warnings? Are we just, our police department is just so nice that they see speeders and just say, don't do the things?
Yeah, so a lot of that is, is based off the violation, whatever the violation is, and officer discretion. So.
Okay.
Most of the time, there's not a need to, to project a citation on somebody that has a monetary fine to it, when a conversation will do just as good.
Okay. Okay, because I hate to say it, but that's also revenue for the village, so with the warnings. And I want to give our.
Not much. Seven, eight bucks.
That's it?
That's it.
By the time you do the court costs and all this.
It costs money, because they got to go to court.
Parking tickets are great, court things are not so great. All right, thank you for that.
One guy's want to hear about seven thirty.
One question, Lieutenant.
Yes.
The alarm responses, I know they went up significantly. Are we good at assuming that's particular offenders that always have a lot of alarm throughout the year?
I, I, I don't know what the, the average is for Rhea Pedders.
He's asking, is it the school?
Sorry. I believe the school may have had one or two, but I don't think.
Oh, okay, so it's not, it's not like out of the twelve, ten of them, you were out at the school all the time?
Correct.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Yes.
Yeah.
Wait a minute.
Different than in the past.
Yes. Yeah. That, that behavior's kind of changed a little bit. And it has, yeah.
That's true.
There's a little bit more responsibility, I think, on their part. I think, I think one of the biggest offenders got a new job.
Thank you, Sharon, that they perked that big.
Just for the record, I mentioned too, it's kind of sad with the destruction of property. This is on, for group A offenses, crimes against society. Destruction of property went from eleven in twenty-two to twenty in twenty-three. Is, I mean, just, just, it could be any property, but I mean, are you, is there like cars or?
It's, it's, it's a wide variety. And I don't have them in front of me to give you a list of them, but.
They're blue graffiti.
The mayor told us to make this as difficult for you as possible.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that, yeah. I'll make up whatever I need to satisfy you.
It's almost an eighty-two percent increase from last year. That's why it was a little alarming. I mean, still, it's eleven, you know, up to twenty this year, so.
Well, and I think, I think some of that may have to do with the truck stop and.
And Park District.
Things like that, so.
Park District.
Oh, yeah, we had, we, we had eight, ten. Yeah, the Park District, yeah, their, their situation is, is definitely significant.
Okay, okay.
Unfortunately, there have been a lot of incidences, as you've seen on social, that individuals are feeling they can destroy bathrooms and buildings and things within our community parks that end up getting shut down for the rest of the community. It's unfortunate.
A quick question here, alarm responses, we told you to hear, do we have a alarm?
Correct.
Question, I've done it before, and accidentally set off the alarm.
Yes.
And if you don't respond, what's the, what's the action that should be taken by homeowner? If they set off an alarm by accident, do they call the police department or what's going to do?
No, typically, your alarm company will call and verify the information. If it's verified within a reasonable amount of time, they will notify our dispatch center that the proper code has been given, and then we will, we will be told to disregard. If, in fact, that happens prior to our arrival, that does not count to this. It would go in as a cat entry, and would not count as a, as a law act.
I've been having a situation too, where I set off a, a, a fire alarm, changing the battery, and I didn't realize it sent the code through to the fire department, and I got to correct it if we did anything with it next month and nothing.
Yeah, so this has nothing to do with the fire system? This would be only her security systems or.
Yeah.
In my house.
I got my lawyer to your house.
I just want to, for the current projects, that's page three thirty-four. For the host community open house for the Vertra three hundred, and that was to be planned in December, which obviously we're not going to do in the next week or so. Is there a continued date you think of?
We have not set a date yet. As soon as we do, I'm sure the people.
Okay.
We did have a media day last week, though, that I attended, and Mo and I were the only two to show up. Not a single media person. I think we had thirty-five media contacts that were sent in December. I'd wait for somebody to get shot and never come out. We call it a war shell.
You want to know if you offered snacks?
Remember, it was sex, they, we had.
That's why we had a meeting.
Doug gets plenty of day for you all to come over to the. It's really pretty cool.
Yeah.
But you can't play Mario Kart. And sometimes.
Why you?
I asked him.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Doug, I see that's very clear. Okay, next, accounts payable. I would ask for a motion to pay the accounts payable personnel indefinitely.
So moved.
Yes, that you do.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Why?
Why?
Because we don't.
Because we don't have one?
Maybe.
I do, yeah, the personnel, so.
One ninety-eight forty-four.
Wow, I thought he had it in somebody that wasn't.
Yeah, I was like, why are we? Oh, I legitimately didn't have it.
Hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents.
I rescind my motion.
Okay, sorry.
Gina and John Rufo and Ken.
Perfect. Can I rescind my motion?
Yeah, absolutely.
I will rescind my motion.
Set it, send it as well.
See one.
Nope. I'm just kidding.
We have to move. Leave your resolution. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable personnel on a hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents.
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Kirk, can you call the rule, please?
Call it.
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Foder?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Okay, next is the big one, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred two dollars and eighty-three cents. Any questions?
Safety vests.
Safety vest.
On page two of this report. Just, I mean, it's, it's, it's forty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Oh, that's for all of the, it's just so that was one safety vest.
They're not cheap.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I'm sorry, I'm thinking about. I was just going to say, my, should you tell me what page you're on? Page two.
That's for forty bucks.
Under Amazon capital services, I think. Going through a quick, we don't have it.
Those were the vests that were obtained for volunteers that are like standing at the parade, at the gates. You know, like to make sure that people aren't moving the traffic gates and stuff. Sure, so, yeah, it's, my apologies, I was thinking it was a police vest, and that's why I was like.
No. Wow, and then I saw the. Yeah.
Page three.
They're the yellow.
Page three. What do we got?
City limit systems, truck wash, eight hundred bucks.
So that's, that's the vendor that we utilize to obtain the soap to wash the snowpaws.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We go, go through it.
Yeah.
There's a little break.
Yeah. Go for the, at the bottom. FCH Commercial Investments.
That is the lease for the police department, um, including the building.
Okay.
Take as much time as anybody needs, you know.
Lots of comments, lots of, um, transition fees, you know, issue.
Mr. Hedges, where did, it's not a question on the charge, where do we install the park bench with the flag?
I'm sorry, where do we end up, what?
Installing park bench?
The park bench arrived yesterday. Oh. And I reported it to Mr. Mott, and we, we have any dedication out there, it's like sometimes saying, oh, cool. Wherever the lines.
That's part of the State Street area, right? Yeah.
Wherever the lines are like.
Okay.
The, the lines, what does it mean again?
And that's instead of the bike, right? Yeah.
Add the break.
Um, page, um, nine.
Oh, we're, we already went to fourteen.
Kane County Division of for the new signal. And it's, it's just twelve fifty-seven, is that a portion of it still? I thought we had already paid for the signal.
Yes, uh, we, we paid, uh, one quarter of the cost.
Yeah.
Bigger, of the bigger piece. Yeah, this was just an additional amount. So we got one quarter of that additional amount. Um, I'll have to check, I, I apologize, I'm not sure if we had paid a hundred percent of that. I, I would imagine it's split because it's made up. Do you want me to check that? I'll do that one. One another, we're still waiting for them.
On the box, it's been a while since we've seen the box.
Yeah.
Although I got to go in the box the one time. I was gonna say, when Lori was out, we had the box right here.
You don't get around it.
Lori, oh, the, they're on the. Yeah.
I tell you what, uh, we'll keep Paul Strain, you can email him, copy the invoice, keep this moving on.
I mean, we're not that late, we've got three hundred pages we've done today, so.
Yeah.
We're only at eight-thirty, so.
Cause then my TV is that?
Truck country wiring repairs, that's for one of our snowplows that was falling. Yeah, was kind of stuck in reverse, electrical problem.
It wouldn't start?
Yeah, it wouldn't go.
About to sit in hotel? Want to stay in rest today? You been up there yet?
No, I was out there before they moved in.
I think they moved it out where Trump is.
They've been moving it all last week. I'm, uh, I'm on vacation.
We can go visit.
Oh, this week.
Oh, we can go visit, but they don't.
Next week, COVID.
The park?
COVID, I'm Tuesday.
Oh. New truck, uh, up towards the weekend, yeah. Get scheduled that.
You got a pool?
Yeah, I heard they got.
Pink guy.
I have some questions. Page eight. The amateur fire protection is big, CER AED, is it for training, reimbursement on a device? What is a hundred and eighty-seven dollars for AED? Cause I know the machines are way more than that.
That was, that was for, uh, buy annual certification for the police officers.
How many officers were able to be certified for that?
All of them.
And that would be?
Thirteen plus, plus Gina. I think it worked out to be seventeen, something of these.
I'm not worried about that, I didn't want to tell like how many officers.
I like that.
How many officers?
Everyone.
Every one.
Not enough.
So if you'd like to go back to Kane County, I can tell you what these are.
Yes.
With the little, uh, bits and pieces. So this was, um, traffic signal installation, um, emergency vehicle preempt system. I believe that would be installation as well. And then, um, so one, street lighting. So Kane County is charging us for each of those different pieces, and that is, that twelve hundred dollars represents three months.
Do we pay this every three months?
Um, that's a really good question, I'm, um, yeah.
Consider solar lighting out there?
Actually, there is still a lighting after. You don't even know if it knows anything about solar?
No.
So we paid for the light itself, and the installation, and, and that was a split between all the different groups?
I do recall that we were responsible for that.
We're responsible for, for the electricity, but yeah. It, it specifically says A two, which is, or excuse me, A three, which is emergency vehicle preempt. That's the system that, it doesn't work on your cars, but it works on the fire department equipment. When they approach the light, all, all sides turn red so that they can, you know, cautiously go through the light.
Is that a month deposit or is that the capital?
It says, it says, um, amount one, three months. So it was, it was charged, that piece was charged at twelve dollars and twenty-seven cents for thirty-six dollars. There is a piece A two, which, I mean, it doesn't say what A two is. And then there's a piece that's L one, street lighting, ten dollars and twenty-three cents for three months, times four, which would be four different lights, I, you know, like.
Yeah.
Or four.
Signals.
Four, yeah, four directions.
Directions.
Yeah, four directions, yep, hundred and twenty-two dollars. And then the big piece is three months of three hundred and sixty-six dollars and six cents, um, and it just says new signal as of August twenty twenty-three.
We'll have to look at this, will K Dot? What was that, Dean? August what?
Twenty twenty-three.
That's what was put in.
Yeah.
So we're still, we're still paying a portion of.
We want to see, we want to see what's installation, uh, what's monthly, regular monthly, so you can either approve this or pull it off altogether, it'll just be lame.
Do we pay for the same, like, um, it was, when it stops, all the lights and turns a red, do we pay for that up at State and seventy-two?
Um, so.
The emergency vehicle?
Yeah.
The fire department paid to have that installed there. Um, so this, I, I don't know, obviously, we're paying for it. Um, but at, at, at State, they actually paid for the installation of that equipment.
Connects to the, to the, to the, you know, there's any ongoing cost upstairs.
Yeah, um, the fire protection. No, I think that is a, that's a state-controlled intersection technically because of the, of the, you know, route seventy-two.
Yeah.
I believe they pay the electricity and everything there. I don't, I don't think that's on our electric bill.
We do have a, a, excuse me, intergovernmental agreement with Kane, with K Dot, and this falls under that. So if, if you don't mind, let's just pull this one out.
Yeah.
We don't mind being like painting Kane County once in a while. Let's just pull this one out and I'll look into it, make sure it's. I will figure out what's capital and what's monthly.
That's, uh, what was my page?
I'm sorry. Oh, you want to?
I think we should just approve it, let, you can come back next month and tell us what it is.
If it's not right, we won't pay it.
I mean, I like that answer because it's, it's not a whole lot of money and.
We gotta pay it.
It's twelve hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy bucks cents.
We'll make sure it's correct before we shut this up.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Send the check.
Any other questions about the campaign? There are none, I'll entertain them out, the, the motion to approve the regular accounts payable, the amount of five hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and two dollars and eighty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Mr. Matt?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strain? Hi. Mr. Robinson?
Hi.
Mrs. Foden? Hi. Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Cole?
Hi.
Motion passes six zero.
There you go.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
He's in New York.
What do we have here? So we have, uh, village board committee reports, is it development?
Uh, I'm actually going to ask Mr. Hedges or, um, Mr. Cones for a report as I was not at the meeting.
Mr. Flabberett?
Yeah, so the business development commission met last Wednesday, it was thirteen. I believe, um, the primary discussion was going over the, um, the document for the downtown businesses, and, um, there was one for the State Farm, whether there was support for allowing the State Farm to change from the brick veneer to stone veneer to siding. Uh, there wasn't support amongst the business development commission to kind of support the change for reimbursement for State Farm on that matter. Um, then we also stopped talking about Main Street America and our membership with Main Street America, what that does, what benefits we get, are there any grants available? So I am going to be reporting to the business development commission at our next meeting about, I had a meeting with Main Street, um, today, actually, and will be reporting to them, um, about that. If there's any questions about, I can answer them.
Was the State Farm project, did we approve that one already?
What happened was the State Farm, actually, the State Farm agent that Tyler is one that operates it, but another State Farm agent owns the store, owns the building, and he's, so he's the landlord. And he applied for the grant. He came back to us and came back to Bill Swalwell and said that, uh, that he was having trouble getting the masonry contractor to come out, um, and that he wanted to just do vinyl instead of brick. And that was not very favorable for the beautification committee, Bill surveyed the committee, but then we also, I, well, we met here and talked about it, but, uh, and we met with Tyler, current owner, just to get his input, or, excuse me, the current tenant. And, uh, at the end of the day, um, the BDC and the beautification committee chose, they, they said they would prefer not, they, they would recommend this board if it ever come, came here, that that not be allowed. Um, first of all, the vinyl was really expensive, it was only like a five thousand dollar savings just built from brick to vinyl. And then he went back, Bill actually called the contractor, it's the same contractor, uh, Trinol Construction, who did that prior to break, they had really nice brickwork, uh, stonework there. Um, and he said he's more than available, come out anytime and do the work. So Bill's gone back to him now, and they're discussing whether he's going to go back to brick. But the only way it would be allowed to go forward as it is, is if he goes back to the brick.
So we haven't approved his project?
It has been approved.
Depending he uses what he.
If he uses the same materials that he, that were approved, he's fine. Uh, he will not be allowed to substitute for vinyl unless he comes to this board and this board approves it, uh, against the recommendation of the BDC.
So we haven't paid anything?
No, we have no reimbursement.
Yeah, we don't, we don't reimburse on the projects until they're complete and they apply showing that they've been completed, then they're checked to make sure they're complete and that they're reimbursed.
Okay.
And I believe it has to be fully completed, it's not like a staged completion, it's, this is the project that was submitted, the project is complete as of now.
So we get the paperwork back from, um, Amelie's.
Not yet.
Yeah, that one's almost closed out, she's re, submitted for reimbursement, but she, she was missing a re wave or something, so.
So I know we, we, we denied one claim or project. Do we anticipate this project is going to go forward as planned, or are we going to have a little extra money here in the?
Bill's pretty good at what, at this, he has his way of.
Yes.
Getting these people to come around, so I think he probably.
Well, and, and the interesting thing too, Trustee Robinson, is there's nothing really in the agreement that gives a timetable. You sound.
It's a six-month.
Six-month.
Yeah.
You have to break that, so it would, it wouldn't be for six months or maybe approval.
They can apply for this.
Right. So at the minimum, it would be six months for approval, which puts us into the next fiscal year anyway.
Right.
So it wouldn't free it up for this fiscal to be reallocated to someone else unless the tenant were to come back and be like, I'm canceled.
No, it's not likely that he'll be able to do the brickwork until spring now anyway.
Right.
Uh, if, if we get the right kind of weather, he can, he can, he can do it.
Oh, right, I'm just, I'm just bringing that up because we did say no to a project because of funding, and now if there's funding available.
Yeah, right, what I'm saying is the only way it comes available is if, if the applicant willing to request it to be.
And he's done most of the other work, so he's already spent a lot of money, so in order to be reimbursed for what he's already spent, he's going to have to agree with it.
Okay.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hedges, if the, if any project, not just this one, but any project says, here are ten things that I'm going to do, and this is the cost of that. And they only achieve eight, but they're like, I'm going to close it out at these eight, they would get reimbursed for up to those eight. They don't have to do all ten to be it, but they have to say, I'm, I'm not going to go for it. What they can't do is nine and ten can't be different than what they had applied for.
Right.
But I believe they can stop short.
Those are imperial, if those are material things, nine and ten, reimbursed, then I think the BDC and beautification committee expect them to be done.
Correct.
So unless they come back to them and say, we don't want to do this portion, then we probably would not reimburse them the first eighty.
Right, it would have to be approved by the BDC and the, and the board.
But that's scope.
Right, the scope change.
Anything else for BDC tonight? Okay, Mr. Coates?
I was in, in attendance, so I'll refer to Mr. Hedges.
I'm sorry for.
Public Works.
Oh.
No. I don't see anything.
We're working like heck to, um, find a way to come up to the Public Works garage for, that's, that's all. Big priority right now.
Okay.
Talking to all of you about that very early January.
Um, budget committee?
Um, I'll be meeting with Ms. Lyons and Mr. Hedges next week, I believe. We'll, we will kind of come do an agreement on the process and, and share that during the next meeting.
Awesome. New business or other announcements?
Yes, I do. Uh, Santa would like to thank trustee Paul Strain, trustee Mott, uh, they were helping Santa at the Copper Barrel, uh, in the entirety of the event. Uh, so those two trustees and Lionel's wife showed up to help us well, but, uh, thank you.
Did Santa see a lot of kids over there?
It's great. Crawled down, up down.
I saw a little ten-year-old kid send it today. Seem right? Maybe a Halloween pastor?
In training.
In training.
I need his address.
I know this was in the, the police report, but it didn't get a mention in the paper. Um, for the girls, from Girl Scouts, uh, Brownie Troop seven twenty-three, they did a coke drive in November, and the young lady, the six young ladies did a wonderful job from what I hear, so. Who goes to the young girls that helped out all these people with, with the vote?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one more thing.
Um, Brownie Troop seven twenty-three.
Uh, first week in January, you're beginning your newsletter, um, Phil Rosetti, that's usual, he's doing a great job, thank you, Phil. This week, uh, this, this newsletter will feature our utilities department, this will be the first of our sort of campaigns we've talked about before. So this will be just kind of an overview of the whole department, it's, it's a really well-written article, Mark wrote it with some help from Lori, and a couple of good pictures too, so I think it gets the start, it'll be the front page story.
I just have two, two quick things, one, I want to thank Santa for coming down from the North Pole to be, uh, in the parade and then to spend time with all the kids at the Copper Barrel and, um, so it's really very cool and to, uh, to help spread the spirit during that, uh, and also to the village staff and, uh, the trustees who were a part of it, um, both in planning and there and in, uh, just keeping people on their thoughts for the holiday celebration, I think it was well received. Um, for those that attended, you saw the number of people downtown, which was really great, so, great job to everyone on that. Um, the second thing, just a quick question, or just a, just to bring it up, I, I think all of us probably get this, um, but there are the notifications from the Department of Transportation that comes out about funding opportunities often. And there was one that caught my mind, caught my eye with some of the stuff we had done previously, it's not released yet, it's under anticipated releasing of notice of funding opportunities, but it's the Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant Program. Um, and I know that was one of the things as part of the railroad project that we may have to shut down one of our crossings, and so I don't know if this applies or not, but.
Actually, that, that will be paid for by C, by Canadian.
Oh, it is, okay, so we don't have to, okay, I didn't, I didn't remember that part, and I thought if there was an opportunity to offset the cost, that could be something.
And actually, ICC did upgrade the crossing at, right, railroad just a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Do we have an idea when the construction's going to start on our new crossing?
No.
No?
We're still in the design, in fact, we're working on eastwards and perverts right now.
That was, that was it, I saw that and I'm like, oh wait, I know we have to close.
Yeah.
I just had one thing to say, I thought the parade was great, um, the holiday parade, the staff was fabulous, I think, it was a really good event, I think everybody enjoyed it that was there. Santa was spectacular, um, I, I did want to just make one comment, it's because I went out to dinner afterwards, and our restaurants were packed because of it. And so when we do something like that, it kind of, there's a residual, and I hope, I went to one restaurant, I hope a lot of people went to the other one, uh, that was still open at that time in the downtown area, so, um, I think things like that really help our businesses and guide us to the downtown area, so.
I'd just like to also point out that what Karen did, what Karen did with the hot chocolate and cookies was great, she and her kids were over there, too. That was really a big thank Karen, thank you for that. Linda's a hard act to follow, I have some cruise director, where Ken's giving her a hell of a run.
Um, I, um, I want to thank all of you for not only participating in, um, the event, thank Karen for everything that she did. I mean, she really planned a lot and stepped into some, like, when we brought Karen in, Linda unfortunately didn't stick around as long as we were thinking she was going to, and Karen's done a hell of a job. I mean, and there's no other way to say it, I mean, I know that she's learning, and I know that, you know, we're all learning together with life after Linda, if you will, but, and she puts her heart and soul into this job, and she is good at getting her whole family to participate in our events. And sisters that don't live in town, and, and it's just, it's, it's been really great, so thank you for that. And at that same end, I want to thank every one of the trustees and every one of the staff members. This year, um, it's not been easy for any of us, I don't think, um, we've had a lot of changes. You know, if you look at where we were a year ago, uh, we've had a lot of changes. There's been a lot of positive things that have happened within the village and growth and construction, and we've had a lot of accomplishments as a board and as a village and, but there's been also a lot of not, not of good times. And I appreciate everybody still being here and working together and being on the same page all the time, and I know sometimes these meetings are longer than others, and sometimes we don't always agree, but I've always appreciated the fact that when the meeting's over, it's over. And we've always been able to work together, and we all have a relationship with each other, and we can all work with each other, and it's not contentious like you see in the news in some of these other places. And so I appreciate that, it makes this job, my job, very, and in that regard, and so I just want to thank every one of you, and I wish you all a happy, uh, Merry Christmas if you celebrate, a Happy New Year.
Did your suit light up?
No, my suit does not light up.
Put away and end the year. Lit up suit.
I just, I appreciate it, and just, um, take a few weeks and relax. And I, and I echo that to the staff too, and I know it's not an easy job, but try to take a few weeks and let's hope that it really goes the way it should, you know, we're not supposed to get any snows, of course, we get a break, you know, so.
They don't want a break. We're all overtime.
But I'm just saying that you guys are all very important to not only me, to the staff, to each other, and to our residents, and the work that we do, we do matters, so thank you. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?